Thank you, everyone. Tonight is September the 10th at 7:01 PM, and we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Orvez.
Here.
Commissioner Postupka.
Here.
Commissioner Lozini.
Here. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we'll open up the meeting for public comments. This section of public comments is for agenda items only. Any comments that are not on the agenda, we would kindly ask them to be held to the end of the meeting. Is there anyone that has any comments for agenda items? Item five, correspondence. South Fayette Library Report, Bennett's. Love your library month, right?
Yes, absolutely. I won't take long. I just did want to mention September is Love Your Library Month. This is our 10th anniversary of Love Your Library throughout Allegheny County. We do it every September to promote libraries, promote awareness of libraries, and encourage giving to libraries. So with that in mind, we have a number of things going on. Tomorrow night at Helicon Brewing is Beer for Books. This is our seventh year doing Beer for Books. The Dave Igler Band will be performing. Two food trucks will be there. We'll have some different raffle things and games going on, so it should be a really nice night. The weather looks promising, so that'll be tomorrow night. All month long, we also have an online raffle. There are over 30 prizes that have been donated. The grand prize is a two-night stay in Deep Creek. You can also win a Wicked package, which is two tickets to the Wicked Tour when it's here in January, a $150 Visa gift card to go out to dinner after the show, and then the Wicked Book Series. But there's, like I said, 30 prizes, all donated by local businesses, organizations, individuals, so there's a lot on there. I encourage you to check it out. And then at the end of the month, on Thursday, the 27th, we're doing a dine to donate with Millie's that we'll be promoting on social media. So there's stuff going on all month. I have tree bags for you as always. I will leave them here for Ariana to give out. If you have any questions, let me know.
Great. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Five B is the Oak Ridge Volunteer Fire Department Report. Generally, we have that online. I think if anyone wants any additional information, they can go ahead and take a look at that. Item five C, South Bridge EMS. Dan, do you have anything? Item six, consent calendar items. Six A, approval of the minutes.
I can make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item six B, payment of bills. Is there anything to hit the highlights?
Sure. I mean, I can give you a top five. Highest paid bills on this month's agenda would be October health insurance payment, a paving program for a product called rejuvenation. Might hear a little bit more about that when Vitali speaks later on. We have quarterly donations to the library and to EMS, and then engineering for the trail design for a grant that Paula received in Fairview Park. So those are the top five.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me ask. Item six C, item six C, financial reports.
I'll just give you the highlights of the budget to actual document. Not a lot of activity on the revenue side this month. We are, for the year, we've collected 15.3 of our budget amount, so we're trending at about 80% of revenues. Good news is expenditures are lagging behind. They're about $10 million. So we're trending in the right direction. Trends look good. We're still hoping for, you know, another strong quarter with EIT and real estate to get to what our budget numbers are, but looks promising.
I'll make that.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion, Lee?
I'll make that motion.
Tim?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Six D, bank account balances.
Right. Only thing to point out here, we did get the capital reserve in line with our fund balance policy, so we have an appropriate amount to comply with our own policy statement. Other than that, just really here for transparency's sake.
Okay, great. Someone like to make a motion to approve the bank balances?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Liaison reports, public safety. I can mention that this month, the four fire departments did some training with a member from the Allegheny County Fire Academy on suppression and alarms earlier last week. There was also the South Fayette Fire Advisory Council where they're continuing to work on the job description for the fire coordinator. So that's all I had from public safety. Becky's not here for public infrastructure. Leanne, do you have anything with finance?
Yeah, so I wasn't able to attend the meeting last month, but Becky did go, so I went through just the notes in the meeting minutes. So I mentioned last month that the original executive director had passed away, so they are posting for an interim executive director of Shake Hog. That role should be filled in the next four weeks. The only other thing I want to put on the radar is, and we kind of talked about this with scheduling that Q3 budget review and just forecast between now and the rest of the year and starting 2026 budgeting.
Okay, thank you. Tim, in our governmental?
Nothing to report.
And Mark is not here. Item eight, older unfinished business. All right. Item eight A, discuss and consider SP-02-2025 Tractor Supply Newbury. Preliminary and final land development application, parcel 197-r-30, which is Zone PED. Construction of a tractor supply infiltration basin, two infiltration trenches, a garden center, and display pads. Tyson?
Good evening. Tyson Miller with KE Resources.
Hello. Matthew in Durante on behalf of MSP Development.
So let me start off by saying, and Jason, I'm sure we'll give a report, but we had requested to postpone it from last month's meeting because we were evaluating some changes. Basically, through negotiations with cigars and Topgolf, we're trying to minimize any of the disruption to some of the existing payments there. So we are moving forward with the design that you have in here with just the only change of just widening the loading area that's at the rear of the store, so we can articulate that on the site plan. But this is in the, as I just mentioned, it's behind cigars and sort of adjacent to Topgolf, so behind, also behind the Municipal Authority Building, so kind of in the back corner of the site. So you'll see that we're proposing a new tractor supply development, as noted. There'll be an outdoor garden center. There's propane filling station. There's an outdoor trailer display, and there's other outdoor merchandise displays. We had sought several variances. We're granted, I think, four of the five or five of the six of those, mostly related to signage, one of them related to fence height. As mentioned in the brief introduction there, there is a stormwater management area that's a surface pond that's located at the top of the page here, and then there are some infiltration trenches that kind of run parallel to the building. This is really the one area left on the site that was not heavily environmentally contaminated, so we're able to take advantage and just kind of over-design the stormwater management areas here to infiltrate as much as possible on this location, which will help, you know, the build-out of the rest of the site. And so, as I mentioned, we're keeping this configuration, as you see here, which means that the road that's between where cigars is and where the Municipal Authority is is called Hall and Drive. And so that Hall and Drive, if you pan down a little bit, so you'll see just in the lower left-hand portion of this site plan here, you'll see that just the cigars patio. And just to the right of that is where this road, Hall and Drive, is, which right now is a dead end. That will extend up into the site, and that's going to be the main point of ingress and egress for both passenger vehicles as well as deliveries. So that was a discussion at the planning commission, so the trucks will come in and kind of make a three-point turn and back into that loading dock that's on the side of the building. As I mentioned just a little bit ago, in the rear of the building, if you can just scroll up, we are going to widen the paved area at the rear of the building slightly just to allow a truck circulation around the entire building. But as I said, since that pond is over-designed right now, it's not going to necessarily affect the stormwater management for this site in particular. So you want to talk anything about, if you have questions, we can start, or we can start with Jason, wherever you want to go next. That's kind of the brief overview.
Yeah. Tyson, I think you set it up well for the board. Some of the previously considered revisions were going to require going back to the planning commission, but the plan that they're moving forward with now that you see in front of you is consistent with what the planning commission approved. There are a few minor changes, but not to the point where we would take it back through planning. Tyson, unless you have objection to anything in our letter, they've agreed to address any outstanding comments between our letter and the county, our recommendation would be for approval.
Okay, so this motion's for approval of the final land development.
Correct.
All right. Will someone like to make a motion for approval of final land development, SP-02-2025 Tractor Supply Newbury?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item nine, new business. Discuss and consider a motion to execute Stonegate Developers Agreement for Phases Three and Five, subject to being finalized in accordance with the engineers' and solicitors' recommendations.
I did want to bring up one point on that, and we're in support of the board executing that agreement. We would request that it would follow the, there is a minor amount of remediation work at the entrance to that plan. The Phase One and Two section, there's a little bit of widening that has to occur. The consultant and their applicant had noted that that work is going to be done very soon here, so quite frankly, I mean, it may be done in the next few weeks, but if we could hold off on signature until that work is actually completed.
So we go ahead and vote to?
We can approve it pending, again, it's already saying.
It's a minor amount of widening to comply with the approved plan.
The engineer's and solicitor's recommendations, so those have to be completed.
Okay. Just making a note.
And we'll inform the board when that work is completed.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to execute Stonegate Developers Agreement for Phases Three and Five, subject to being finalized in accordance on a conditional basis with the engineering and solicitors' recommendations?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item nine B, discuss and consider a motion to execute TF South Fayette LLC Developer Agreement for the Bass Pro Project, subject to it being finalized in accordance with the board's, engineers', and solicitors' recommendations.
I'll go put your thing on here, too.
Sorry. Is there any?
Sorry, no comment.
We're fine with everything. We've had discussions with the Bass Pro Shops here, and we'll follow those recommend. They're in agreement with the recommendation, so this should be fine.
Okay. Will someone like to make a motion to execute TF South Fayette Developer Agreement for the Bass Pro Project? That's really hard to say.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Nine C, discuss and consider a motion to accept TF South Fayette LLC request to modify the developer's agreement to permit Sunday work on the Bass Pro Project.
The applicants and the developer did submit a request to work on Sunday, and the intent of that was to catch up schedule-wise. They've been somewhat setback with permitting. It's not a typical Sunday work item within the township.
Yep.
But, I mean, it is something that we've approved before, so it's basically subject to the board's authorization.
And also, this is one of the recommendations that we discussed with Bass Pro Shops that they requested. Where they're located at, there's very little contact with any residential area.
Right. So they'd be willing to, like, amend that, or can we amend that to allow Sunday work from nine to five?
It'll be fine.
All right. Somebody like to accept TF South Fayette's request to modify the developer's agreement to permit Sunday work, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM?
I'll make that.
Based on the project?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Your motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nine D, discuss and consider a motion to advertise for a public hearing for CU-01-2025 GSL Contractor Storage Building, Conditional Use Appropriation, 800 Millers Run Road, which is Zone PED. This is garden scape landscaping?
Yes.
No, growing seasons, growing seasons.
It is. This is on the agenda for the planning commission because of the PED district. This is a conditional use that would have to be advertised.
Okay. So would someone like to motion just to advertise for the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nine E, discuss and consider a motion to advertise for a public hearing for CU-02-2025 Little TT's Toy Box Academy. It's a conditional use application in 803 Berska Drive, which is Zoned B1.
This application is for proposed daycare in an existing facility. There's no build-out or no exterior improvements, but the use requires a conditional use.
Yeah, I did see that was on last month's.
Yep, that was for acceptance.
All right. Can someone please make a motion to advertise for a public hearing for Little TT's Toy Box Academy?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and consider release of bonds for Clean Express Auto Car Wash.
We've completed the closeout inspection on that. All work has been completed, and we recommend bond release.
Would someone like to make a motion? Well, first off, is any questions?
No, I'm good with that.
Would someone like to make a motion to release the bonds for Clean Express Auto Wash?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and consider a motion to award a contract to John Koski Contracting for the demolition of 51 South Fayette Street in the amount not to exceed $11,129.
We provided a recommendation for that, and we're in support.
Okay. Can I have a motion to award a contract to John Koski Contracting for the demolition of 51 South Fayette Street in the amount not to exceed $11,129?
I'll make the motion.
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just before we move on, real quick, is all of the testing work come back?
The asbestos has been tested, yes.
Okay, so everything's remediated and?
Yep, those are ready to go.
Very good. Nine H, discuss and consider a motion to award a contract to Minifield Demolition Services LLC for the demolition of 18 Morgan Street in the amount not to exceed $15,000. Same?
Same thing. We provided a bit tab and a recommendation, and we're in support.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, so the motion was to award a contract to Minifield Demolition Services LLC for the demolition of 18 Morgan Street. Motion was made by Commissioner Orvez and seconded by Commissioner Postupka. All in favor?
Aye.
Nine I, discuss and consider a motion to accept proposal from MS Consultants for design development of the 515 Millers Run Road Project.
Right, this is related to the old township building, the library expansion project. Last month, we brought to you a proposal from the MEP engineers for design development work. You'll recall that MS had provided us a more comprehensive proposal. We had worked through it and decided to parcel some stuff out, so this proposal that you're accepting has been revised from its original format, and we're covering the MEP through a different sub, and Gibson Thomas is handling the site work, the civil work for the projects. This reflects that.
Is this a not to exceed, or?
It would be. I don't have that. Let's see if we can get to the amount.
It's just for design development and construction?
Correct. Let me add these two together, Chuck, because they give us, page three gives us the amounts, but yeah.
948, 9. It looks like those two numbers add up to 135, 945.
That's Chuck's point, is there language around not to exceed?
The agreements in front of you, you know, it spells out lump sum 135, 945.
There it is. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Good catch. All right. Based on that, would someone like to make a motion to accept a proposal from MS Consultants for the design development of the 515 Millers Run Road Project?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and consider a motion to advertise for the Public Works Park position.
Backfilling spot, if we could advertise.
Okay.
For it, we'll let you know. We are also accepting the applications currently for labor position, so.
Okay. Can we, is the labor position on this, or we did last month?
We did last month.
The last month?
Yeah.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to advertise for the Public Works, Open Public Works Park position?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nine K, discuss and consider setting the 2025 trick-or-treat hours for October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00. I don't think we need to explain that, all right?
I'll make the motion.
Tim?
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll have Halloween on, the day is supposed to be on. Department reports, managers' report.
Great. Submitted my report to the board. I have a few maybe items off the report to touch on as well. First, wanted to share that I did have an opportunity to meet with the forum of homeowners associations that we had spoke about in previous months. I know Chief, he had spoken with them. I was asked to participate. They had a lot of questions about private roads and how streets are deemed private and the township's process for dedication and acceptance. So it was a, you know, healthy conversation. I think it's a nice group that seems to be building momentum, so we'll continue to play a role in helping them get their questions answered. Just another update on the 515 project. I know we approved that contract for MS. We did have a field meeting this week just to look at the structural engineer, to look at the integrity of some of the walls, make sure that walls that were, need to be load-bearing are and vice versa. So we did get a little bit of good news there. It looks like the, you know, the original plan that they've come up with should work from a load-bearing wall standpoint. We're also working with Ben and the library on the Keystone Grant. We had resubmitted everything. We have a date of 9:30 to get all of the various components together, so we haven't gotten that formal word yet. We'll continue to let you know when we do, but we're keeping our fingers crossed that we can get it to transfer.
But everything's been submitted, right?
The only thing we're waiting on is a revised estimate from the consultant.
Okay.
We should have that here in a few days and hopefully have enough time to get it through.
Good.
Lastly, I just wanted to mention that, you know, the issue with the developers' agreements being on your agenda, you know, as I shared with you previously, it's not something that we had always done with every developer's agreement, but in talking with Jason and internally here, we think it's probably a good idea to share them with the board, just because there's a lot of, there's some details that you're asked to sign off on without getting a chance to maybe address them in public. So these two might not have had anything more than the wider entrance or the work on Sundays, but just want you to, you know, see that stuff before you sign off on it.
Yep, appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick, Assistant Managers' Report?
Yes, Commissioner. I submitted my report, and if you have any questions, I'm open to anything.
Questions for my side?
No, I read it last night, and there wasn't anything that jumped out at me. No, I'm good. All good? Thank you. Easy peasy. Building reports.
Most significant to point out here is a commercial permit for building four of the Apex Newbury Apartments. You'll see the commercial revenue is pretty healthy this month, about $30,000 of the $32,000 revenues from that one permit. So other than that, mostly a few new construction homes and just, you know, regular permits for fences and sheds, things like that.
Okay. Thank you. Andrea, Communications and Community Development?
Hello, Andrea Egler, Director of Communications and Community Development. New thing today, you may have seen, the Portion May View Road is going to be closed September 15th to October 9th, but it looks like it shouldn't affect too much direct access to anything in South Fayette. Local businesses will be able to be accessed during that time. We coordinated a groundbreaking with Wembley at the beginning of the week with a Wembley club that's coming to Newbury Market, and coordinated press coverage with several outlets on that, and also with the Chamber of Commerce. Refer them to the Chamber of Commerce, who also was involved with the groundbreaking. So I know the developer owner expressed that he was really, you know, pleased with how welcoming the township has been with the new business and how much support he's been getting, so I wanted to pass that along to you. And we did have over 40 tons of electronics collected on Saturday, and we scheduled two collections for next year as well in the spring and the fall. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
That was my question. How many tons? I had written down, how much you get?
Yes. Forty point four, to be exact.
Lot of TV.
Yeah.
Nope. I don't have any other questions.
I read your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. Engineering report, Jason?
Evening, again, board. I'll give you an update on a few of the items here. The MS Four program, we've been working with township staff on that. The annual report to DEP is due September 30th, so we'll have that submitted on time. Earlier today, we had the Panhandle Trail pre-construction meeting with the successful low bidder. That contract was awarded at the last board meeting to Millie and Millie. They requested notice to proceed on that project for September 22nd, and they plan on moving in at that time. They think they need about three days to complete that project, so hopefully by the end of September, that'll be paved and completed. Got a lot going on with planning and developers' agreements. This month's planning commission, we've got a pretty full slate with about five or six different projects on there. If anyone has any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I do not.
I do not.
Me either.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you. Vitali, facilities?
Press hold to mute. There are a few updates regarding facilities and the capital improvement projects on page number five. Andrea, please. I worked with a consultant, which was, it's a free services paid by federal government to assess energy efficiency of this facility, and you can see the details on page number seven. So if, what states that if we would have been a private, private, private building, yeah, we would have saved 61.4,000 for a tax credit in 2023. Also, we checked, we checked the new set points for, checked the set points for HVAC system. We checked all the timing for the lighting system, so everything's up to the latest codes and... That's all I have for that, in regards to that. Common area maintenance on page number nine. I reached out local landscaping business just to have, just to get an estimates on common ground maintenance throughout the year. As you can see on page number 10 and page number 11 and 12, so under $8,000 bucks, we can have a full service done, which will include replacement of the trees, replacement of mulch, weekly grass cutting, weed control.
Is that typically something that could be done, or, not talking about replacing trees, but like the grass cutting, wouldn't parks usually do that? Or not parks, but they?
We started this year, but I'm just giving an idea.
I think what we found is the maintenance along at this building.
A little different.
It's intensive just because of the slopes and the machines that are needed, so we do have to, you know, get equipment. It's not push-mowers. We have to get equipment to do the hillside. The amount of mulch takes a few days, so it is labor-intensive. I think the evaluation is, you know, what's our cost versus their cost, and what's the opportunity cost of having this?
So you're kind of in the exploratory phase?
That's right.
Yeah.
I will include it for 2026 budget purposes, so.
Yeah. I just want to be prepared if someone says, we have people that cut grass, why are we paying someone to cut grass?
I understand, but the problem is, since this is a public place, we have to spread fertilizer. to spread fertilizer.
Yeah, no, that's all I'm saying. I, I don't disagree with you. I'm just saying, give me the, the reason behind it.
I can give you cost analysis if they're doing in-house or we, we sub out when we get.
Yeah, thank you.
And also, also that company identify each, each species, species that outside of in common area and that they know how to cut, trim.
Yep.
Just for exploratory purposes. Paying, paving program, 2025 paving program is complete, under budget. And on a page number 15, this is a preliminary 2026 paving program proposed. And all the roads selected based on a surface rating. We have a software implemented. So, so we picked the worst road conditions. Once again, this is still preliminary. Also working on a storm CCTV project, what will inspect underground infrastructure before, before we pave the road. Also then, one more thing I would like to do, all of this, once we get the final approval from the board, I will upload all the program into P1 call. So every, every entity registered in the state of Pennsylvania will, will know that these are the projects or these are the roads we're doing in 2026. So they will, should create less disruption and
More efficient.
Be more efficient, yeah. Less conflicts. Bridges, Colpit. I met with the DOT and LTAP representative. So he provides us with, with a report in regards to bridge located on Colpit Road. And also several grants are available. So I will be looking for that to apply. Hopefully we'll be successful. Can get the money to fund this project. And that's all I have. If you have any questions.
I do not. You answered them all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, Parks and Rec?
Good evening. Sorry, I have quite a few things to go over, so I apologize for the time in the summer, so.
We're ahead. Take all the time you need.
First things first, we did lose a Parks member and I just want to recognize Jeff for his dedication that he had to the township, although it was only a couple of months. He really did love the parks and he was a joy to work with, so just wanted to mention that. Okay, so first things first is up at Fairview, the turf was delivered. They'll be installing the turf starting next week. You can kind of start seeing poles going in, which are along the sidelines, so we're making progress on that. The tennis courts are closed yesterday till next Tuesday because they're resurfacing them. So we posted that they're closed. The contractor will put a lock on it just so no one walks on it. So those are getting taken care of. We are on track for the Fairview Trails, still in design phase, working with PennDOT for approval, but still hopefully to go to construction next spring.
So Paula, I can interrupt you, please, because I guess we have a lot of questions about tennis, just a guess. So could you maybe just elaborate a little bit more on tennis courts and some of the communications that we had with that organization and future plans?
Sure. I, I believe I sent an email saying that the courts are getting resurfaced. We were just kind of at the beck and call of the contractor because we didn't get the grants until about spring. So once I reached out to contractor, they already had all it. So just took some time to get done, but it is getting done. It's going to be fixing all the cracks and then resurfacing. It'll look just like the one at Morgan Park. There's two courts up there. So that's the correspondence that I had sent and let them know that we were.
Do we have a timeline on that, Paula?
At least about a week. So the court will, we closed the courts yesterday. It should be done by next Tuesday.
They started, you're saying?
Yeah, they started yesterday.
Oh, great. Okay, I missed that, sorry.
Is there anything else?
No, thank you.
All right. Just a heads up, next month, the updates to the SFAA bylaws will come in front of you. They'll go into the Parks and Rec Board first and then they'll come to you to get re-adopted as an ordinance. So that's just looking forward. Jason touched on the Panhandle Trail and kind of want to touch base Andrea on our splashpad. So another second, second year under the belt. Everything went pretty well. Heard a lot of positive feedback. First year concession stand, learning curve with staff, but had a great set of kids this summer. So in total, we brought in $14,530, which was 6,330 items sold. You can see our most popular was chips and Dippin' Dots. It was our most popular items.
Dippin' Dots.
Yeah. So then I kind of put a bunch of numbers together. All these numbers come from kind of everything to do with the splashpad, Mayview Pavilion, concession stand. So the rentals, that is for just the Mayview Pavilion from January to today. And then the concession expenses. So in total, we brought in $22,940 between those two revenue streams. The expenses are that, so concession inventory, that is like purchasing of the chips and the Dippin' Dots. And then also being the first year, we kind of had to buy some shelving and paper products, you know, one-time purchase things. The splashpad maintenance expense, that is like our chemicals and parts, things like that. And then so in total, we spent about $10,000 on park attendant wages. I want to make it known that our splashpad is a recirculation system, means, meaning we have to check the water every two hours. So last year, if you recall, we outsourced that and had American Pool that just sat up there and all they did was check the water. We didn't really have them, you know, cleaning, selling anything. It was just them. And so last year, the contract with them was 27,500. So really bringing that, you know, that work in-house saved lots of money. So that's where all those numbers came from. Any questions on that? Did I answer all your questions that you kind of asked last month?
Yes, it's great, perfect.
Sounds good. So also on the agenda is an update to our facility rental policy. This also went from the Parks and Rec Board last night. It's just a policy, so you don't really vote on anything, but just wanted to make you aware of it, of our suggestions and kind of get your blessing on it. So all our pavilions in the park, we, it's one, one rental a day. So it's yours from 8:00 AM till 10:00 PM. And the reasons for that is because we don't really have the staff to go in, clean up afterwards, do the changeover. But now that we have a concession stand and staff onsite at the splashpad, we're suggesting, you know, Mayview Pavilion Side Two, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, we can offer three rentals a day. And actually, we kind of did get some feedback that that pavilion is more like birthday parties rather than the other pavilions, graduation party, bigger parties. So people are, you know, not really needing the pavilion for that whole stretch of the time. So our suggestion is to allow on Saturdays and Sundays, three rentals a day, and then that would enable us to generate more revenue in, to offset the cost of the splashpad. So looking at, you know, a morning, afternoon and evening block for four hours, have resident and non-resident rates and those suggesting $150 for Monday through Friday. And the reason we're only doing one on Monday through Friday is because we have camps all the time at the park. So even at the Rotary Pavilion, rentals during the week don't start till four o'clock because we, we have, we have, use the pavilions for programs, activities, things like that. So my next slide, I kind of just did real, very conservative numbers. The Mayview Pavilion itself had 46 rentals this year, so these numbers are pretty low, but I was just kind of wanting to show you that potential, that type of revenue we can by allowing multiple rentals a day. Any questions on that? So the fee?
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So Paula, does the residence maybe would be a good idea, like in, in connect to, publish what the policy is, how to rent it? Like, when can you rent it? And then, do we give any benefits to our residents renting it for a non-resident?
Yes. So we, the part of the policy, rentals can be made one year in advance to the date. So if you would want June 5th, of June 5th of this year, you go on and can reserve it for June 5th next year. The policy's on our website. The intern this summer made how-to videos on how to make reservations. So it's all on the township website. And I think a couple of times we posted on, in the magazine, like how to, if you want to reserve a pavilion. So it's been out there and we can definitely do it again, especially with these changes. We can definitely do that again. And so for residents, residents just have a cheaper rate than non-residents.
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
No.
So the, like I said, the policy doesn't have to get approved, but when we do the fee schedule, probably at the end of the year, you'll see that these fees will go in front of you to re-approve the fees for the Mayview Pavilion. Any questions on that?
I think it's great.
Perfect, thank you. Summer camp, great, great summer, great feedback, even better feedback from last year. We're always looking to how improve. One thing that parents mentioned a lot over the summer and we figured to put it in the survey is they are looking for more before and afters camp care for the working parents. So Ian and I are actually going to have a, a training with our rec software to see how easy it would be for us to kind of implement that. And so just something looking for 2026 and maybe adjusting the times of our camps to accommodate those working parents. And Community Day was a great success. Unfortunately, the car counter that we put at the entrance did not count cars. So don't have the numbers on that. Sorry about that. It counted nothing. But another great year. We had more vendors than we've ever had before, 30, pretty much a 30% of vendors. We were placing them places that I, you know, we were just making up to put vendors. But once again, lucky with the weather, great day. A total brought in over $40,000 in vendors and sponsorship fees. So another great day in the books. And I think that is all I have.
Should be noted, I, I mean, I was there for, Tim was there for quite a bit. We recognized the amount of work that goes into that and it's appreciated by everyone.
You've been great.
And, um, great job. Tried to make, tried to get around. There were so many vendors. I think we were there for four hours and then I said, oh, geez, there's still more up top.
Yeah.
But everybody there was, was great. They were very appreciative and were, said they were excited to come back next year.
Thank you for going around and greeting everyone. I think we're going to have to definitely make some changes next year, just with all our park projects going on. Going to have to change up the layout, but great team of Andrea and Ian and our Community Day Committee definitely is a team effort, so.
Yeah, well done.
Anything else? Sorry, that was a lot.
I do not.
You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Good evening. John Phoenix, Chief of Police. We did have one of those car counters on the Mayview side that worked. It was 310 cars that came in around the Mayview, but the most of them come in from Fairview.
Hey, what about a copper with a clicker?
In August, our department had 547 calls for service. That's 462 more than we had this time last year. So each month has been a little bit more and, more and more. So we're getting busier and busier. Our officers stopped 194 vehicles in August. You'll notice in my report, there was a little bit of an uptick, more than a little bit in overtime for the month of August. That was due because we, I anticipated one of our two officers that are on light duty to come back. He was not cleared to come back, but he will on September 25th. So that overtime coupled with a few other details, including Community Day, ran up the overtime for us. On August 27th, I had a coffee with the chief up at the meeting house in Hunting Ridge. We had eight, there are 10 people in attendance and other good, healthy discussions about things going on in that area. So that was a success. We had another police vehicle in an accident. So that's unfortunately our fourth traffic accident this year. Before that, we've probably had only one in the last five, six years. So it's been a really bad year between guys being off on light duty and traffic accidents. So we're down another car. So we're down four cars at this point, but we'll make two. I had met with the school and the new school police officer at the beginning of the month. They sent us, well, the beginning, at the end of last school year, we had sat down with the superintendent, Michelle Miller, and put together an MOU agreement that we had with the school. There were a few things that we wanted to iron out on our end. We've almost gotten there. I got their new updated MOU at the beginning of the week. So I would like to have somebody, whether it's John or Gary, kind of take a look at it before we sign off on it. So that's in the works right there, so.
I imagine that memory memorandum of understanding is about like when you guys are called versus when they're taking care of stuff?
What they can handle, what we can deal with. And there, I mean, there's certain things the law allows them to do that we, misdemeanors, felonies, we still have to handle. They can handle summary type things.
Understood.
Yep. So we're working with them. So if Gary or somebody wants to look at it, I looked it over today with the lieutenant. We're pretty satisfied with where it is. So I, I don't think there's any.
Send it over tomorrow and I'll get it turned around real quick, Chief.
Um, and that's really all I have for the month. Is there any questions?
I don't have any.
I don't. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, request tracker?
Oh.
What did I miss? Oh, Danny.
You missed Danny.
Come on.
You almost got all the way through.
Almost.
Almost.
Dan would have been crushed if he
I'm sure.
Did get a chance to give his report.
I was, I looked before to make sure he was here.
Quiet.
Good night, our good night.
As long as you guys didn't wreck any vehicles, we're all right.
We're good.
All right.
Our Parks guys, been busy, even though the grass ain't grown. They're doing catch-up on the other work with the trails and different things. Todd's been busy.
Putting up signs.
Pardon?
Putting up stop signs.
Putting up stop signs and doing all our one calls for us. Mechanics, obviously, they were always busy fixing up different trucks. You see the one truck in there now that is just rusting. Some of the parts are, had to replace them. Mayview, we're talking, uh, Mayview Site Building. The building is enclosed now. We're working on getting garage doors. You can see the salt building. They're full of salt now, ready for winter. We're ready to go. Now that's up the boys home and Mayview Site, so. And the one down in Morgan's full too. So we're ready to go to let it snow.
Now let it snow.
You can see Alpine Road, we did some base repair on that dipty do there. We dug that out and filled it back in with asphalt. Same with Hickory Gray, we dug all the soft spots out, fixed them all up, paved them. And we did some base repair on McVeigh and we did a lot of patching on Boom the Road.
Good.
Thanks, Dan.
Does anyone have any questions?
Very good.
Thanks, Dan.
Danny, thank you.
Now we'll do the request tracker. Kind of a light month.
Not much in there, yeah.
Light month with a request tracker, only about a dozen waste management complaints. But, you know, something we continue to, to track. I don't necessarily know if it was better service or just fewer complaints this month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One page is good.
Right. Short, short month.
Yeah. That's right, three weeks, right?
Right. Any questions or anything I can answer about any of them?
So, sir's report, Mr. Matta?
Nothing for public session unless the commissioners have any questions of me.
I'm good, Gary.
We will now open up the public comment. The board will hear comments from residents and their taxpayers. The time limits will not exceed three minutes. The board may not respond to questions during this session, but will only hear public comment. If anyone does have public comments, please approach the microphone, state your name and your address. And please do remember that these meetings are broadcast on our PEG channel as well as YouTube.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Kamal Shah. I am a resident of the South Fayette Township. I live at 3112 Eping Willow Drive in Bridwell. I have two boys, Aditya and Rishi, and my husband, Pranay. We are, we've been living in this community for quite a while. And I'm joined with Marla Zalinski, who is also a South Fayette resident. She's also a tennis coach in the community. We're also joined with a bunch of folks, as you can see back here in the audience. These are South Fayette residents. Some of them are tennis players themselves, and if not themselves, they have family members who are tennis players or interested in playing tennis. And last and not, but not the least, we have a bunch of athletes, kids from the South Fayette School District. They are players on their boys and girls' South Fayette tennis teams. So today we are all, they're all here to support us. And I don't know if you may recall, we were here in the summer. We had put a request to the board to add more public tennis courts in the community. We have a growing tennis community and interest in the, in the, in the community for playing tennis. And so today we are here to follow up on that request and also add a couple of details around some points that we have gathered along the way that I'm going to let Marla speak to.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the time. I'd first like to address Wembley. I understand they broke ground on Monday, Monday, and I'm sure it's a great addition to South Fayette Township community, yet it still does not fulfill the need for public tennis courts in South Fayette. Public tennis courts are the grassroots location for tennis players. Most professional tennis players start at public tennis courts. You can simply speak to Serena Williams and her family who started at public tennis courts. This is why it's important to also recognize Paula Willis and Ian Mitchell, who I worked with over the summer for tennis programs, because that's where the root is. It all begins for, as we know, athletes when they're young at the park. Lastly, I want to discuss, as Kamal had mentioned, is our South Fayette High School Boys and Girls Tennis Team who's here today. Many of them have been spotlighted in your South Fayette Connect Magazine for state and national recognition for academics. I share this with you to understand the type of athletes tennis produces and the contribution, contribution and their families provide to South Fayette Township. They're here tonight as they need your help with more public tennis courts. Many of our residents go to Upper St. Clair, Mount Lebanon, and Peters to play tennis. You can easily have a high-level tennis program here in South Fayette Township if the courts are built. And that's why we requested with Fairview Park the last time we were here. And with the relationship with USTA, as you remember. And with the relationship with USTA, as you remember, Kelly Cunningham was here with USTA. And the USTA will provide grants for Parks and Recreation and School Districts, which they have done with the school district, but that project is four years out. And our students here are trying to share courts with Chartiers Valley, which was somewhat of a solution, we thought it would be, because Fort Cherry Courts are not safe and you cannot competitively play on those. So now they're in a situation right now where they can't practice till 6 PM. And as I just mentioned, these are highly academic students and they contribute a lot to the township and their school district as students. So we're trying to find a solution. We know there's, I was there, obviously, this summer helping out, giving lessons. There's room there, right next to those two tennis courts, and we know those are going to be resurfaced. But if there's two more tennis courts, if we, if there's any way we can get it on the agenda to vote on two more tennis courts at Fairview Park, it'll make such a difference in this community, for the students, for the community. It really will. Again, as there was mentioned in our last meeting, over two hundred residents go to Upper St. Clair, Mount Lebanon, and Peters Township wasn't even mentioned. So we share this with you tonight, public tennis courts are everything when it comes to tennis.
So may I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Because I did see in Paula's report that we have submitted four grants for USTA, I think there were actually two grants, right? Yes. But, but that wasn't my question. So the, the question that I had, do you have any figures of the approximate size needed, cost needed, and traffic impact for two courts regardless of where they are put?
So Kelly.
I would have no idea what a tennis court costs.
Yes, so Kelly Cunningham provided you with those packets with the USTA. So they will pay half of the amount. So a court runs around thirty-five thousand each. So two more courts would be around seventy thousand. USTA, if you submit the grant, will pay half for each of those courts. But not only that, they'll bring in engineers, they will provide other services such as locks to the gates that they're giving to Parks and Recreation and schools that are putting a tennis courts. They're trying to build the tennis community bigger, USTA is. And they have a lot of money sitting there, and we're just trying to grab it before it may be taken away from us. So we're just trying to follow up to see, is there an opportunity to put this on the agenda to possibly vote on this where we can add two more courts minimum to Fairview Park for the students?
I'm sorry, do you mind if I ask a question? The Fairview Park location is, you're thinking where the basketball courts are, so that you would ask us to remove the basketball courts?
Yeah, I think that would be, yeah, it would be.
Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no, there is room there and, you know, we can, if, if we can, we can put in the courts there. So that would give us four courts adjacent to each other.
Right.
Which will have even the tennis team as well as the community tennis players.
Gotcha.
Are you guys locked into Fairview?
Yes, many times.
And was, I mean, I know, I mean, like, if we had Magic Land somewhere else. I mean, that's what I'm asking, I mean, you, you mentioned Fairview a couple of times, because I know we already have two there. So is there any reason that you're, you're not insisting they be in Fairview is my question.
Just in the community, doesn't have to be Fairview.
It's just in the township.
And there's two courts there already.
Already there, so. So we thought it would be easier, cost-effective, it's just two more courts right there.
Yeah, yeah. I think we talked in July, was there a, there was a magic number for tournaments and matches, right?
Four. Four is the minimum number of courts.
And that would definitely help out the high school boys and girls team, so they can at least have a home base. They are not going to have a home base for three to four years right now, the way it's looking for the project at the school. USTA has helped the school district and they will help.
The, the only issue we have with the USTA, and that's a great resource, and we, we do want to use them and we have. But I, I think if we were to pursue the grant for new courts, they have rules about using it for pickleball or other pretty popular sports that we'd be hard pressed not to allow some form of other use of. I think that is what you had shared with me, Paula, is that accurate?
Correct, yeah, they have restrictions for the funds, and if I'm, correct me when I'm wrong, I think for building new courts, the USTA, it has a maximum of, I believe, don't hold me this, but twenty thousand dollars per court. So I don't necessarily know if it would make the, you know, half of it. It's just, what theirs is, they'll give you up to twenty thousand dollars per court, is what they give. And just my concern with Fairview, where the courts are located is parking. There's no parking where those courts, courts would, extra courts would go. So to your point, you know, I think maybe a different park is a better option. Because we also have plans for trails that are already in the works, kind of in those areas. So there's already things in the works for Fairview, Fairview Park that are kind of already underway that my suggestion would be to kind of do a feasibility study of where would be a better option.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then is, will there be another discussion or put on the agenda, do we come back?
Well, the, the one thing I learned in seventeen months in government is nothing moves fast. Right? So to Paula's point about the feasibility study, we need to do that type of stuff, we need to get engineering involved. I mean, I don't even know all of the process, but you know, I just want to set expectations that even if the money was unlimited and we had as much money as, you know, to, to spend, and we voted and said, turn a shovel, we're not going to have them by the spring. Right? So while the school might be, you know, four years, five years, I don't know what even a timeline would be if we had a perfect spot and we had unlimited funds, unless you have.
Correct, and permitting process, which we know that has some challenges along the way too, for permitting.
So from a permitting standpoint, is that like DEP?
Potentially, depending on how many courts you did at one clip, I mean, if you, they, they want to look at the whole picture, not even if you went in and said, hey, we're going to build two this year and two the following year or whatever, they want that permitted at the same time. So you have to anticipate stormwater management, parking, ADA requirements possibly. There, there are a lot of things that have to be considered upfront.
Have you done any projects like this in other communities?
We have, we have.
And ballpark, what's a timeline?
Tennis, not this many courts at one clip. I mean, we've done, you know, one court, basketball courts, things of that nature, smaller degrees, cost, is that what you're trying to anticipate?
Cost and timeline, both?
Timing, I would say safely six months from start to finish, from feasibility to, you know, bidding, construction, that type of thing. Six months minimum.
From building to construction, but how long's construction? I don't know.
A couple of months.
Looking nine months to a year?
Potentially.
Ballpark.
Yeah.
And these other courts in other communities, all in price with, you know, fencing, that type of stuff?
Fencing potentially, lighting, that type of thing, I mean, it depends on what all you want involved.
I mean, is thirty-five thousand in the ballpark, or do you see that as like?
That's very low.
Okay.
Very low, and that probably doesn't include any type of stormwater management or parking or things of that nature. Seating.
Would that come with a feasibility study?
Yeah, typically, yes.
If the USTA does help out in that regards too?
Understood. Okay.
And that was one of the reasons why we were thinking we could just add two more courts in Fairview and that would minimize the number of additional courts.
Yeah, I got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on any other topic? Very good, thank you. We'll move on to board discussion, Ian, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
I'm good, Chuck.
Tim?
I'm good. I did have one thing, I just need to find it real quick, and I mentioned that I would bring it up. I was on a call today with the Humane Action of Pennsylvania. And they have a whole policy team around, you know, animal welfare, protecting dogs in inclement weather, some resources that I think we could potentially use relative to training and community resources that we could share on wildlife management, what do you do if you come across a deer or coyote? So I mentioned to their director that I would, you know, put them in touch with you. And chief, they had some things that you might be interested in as well, not necessarily specific to a canine or bloodhound. But, you know, just, you know, legislation through the, through the state and how animals are to be treated potentially in a domestic situation, might be some good information to share with residents. So I'd mentioned to them that I would bring this up at the meeting and I'll forward you some of the stuff that they have, okay? So that's all I had. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion adjourned, thank you very much for coming, everyone.